Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting for Monday, August the 13th, 2012. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and at this time, the, our presentation of colors will be a combined group this evening of junior ROTC cadets. And these are the cadets that's going to be presenting the colors tonight. Cadet Technical Sergeant Matthew Luke from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Cadet First Lieutenant Eric Hatfield, J.M. Robinson High School. Cadet Captain Ashley Haas, Central Cabarrus High School. Cadet Major Temathy Vincent from Mount Pleasant High School. Also, Cabarrus County Schools Air Force Junior ROTC Program Instructors, RS follows. From Central Cabarrus, we have Lieutenant Colonel Nelson English, U.S. Air Force Retired. We have Major, Master Sergeant Carlos Dela Cruz, U.S. Air Force Retired. And then from J.M. Robinson, we have Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose, U.S. Air Force Retired. And Master Sergeant Wayne Outrum from U.S. Air Force Retired. Mount Pleasant High School, we have Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell, and he's our new, he's our new instructor for Mount Pleasant, and he's from U.S. Air Force Retired. And then we have Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin, U.S. Air Force Retired. And finally, Northwest Cabarrus High School Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin, U.S. Air Force Retired, and Senior Master Sergeant Corinne Smith, U.S. Air Force Retired. Will y'all stand and join me as the presentation of colors?
Greetings, colors.
(inaudible)
Right, six. Oh, arch.
I know I say it most every time we get together and they do the presentation of colors, but I'm so proud of the junior ROTC program. It's, it's so instrumental in the lives and the development of these children, so I appreciate the support and all the help that is provided for them. All right, board members, tonight, we need to set the agenda, and you've had the agenda for several days now, but we do need to make a minor amendment here. We need to add one of our action items down here that's, uh, let me just find out where it's at. It's on the, the North Carolina School Board, eight point two, on our action agenda. We need to move that discussion to closed session. May I have a motion that we make that move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, with that being added to the closed session, may I have a, a motion that we adopt the agenda as amended?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, the agenda's set. All right, now, we need to move to the approval of the minutes. You've had this since last week, and maybe even a little bit longer than that. Are there any corrections, or do the minutes stand as presented?
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion that they're, that they are as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes for the July 2nd combined work session and business meeting have been approved. Okay, now, we're going to move on to the reports section, and at this time, we have one of our own board members, Ms. Carolyn Carpenter. She went to the National School Board Association Conference, and I'd like to ask Ms. Carpenter, she'll step down to the podium, and she's going to give us about a eight or 10-minute report on her trip.
Thank you, board members. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to represent you at this 72 Annual National School Board Association Meeting, which was held in Boston in April. It was a wonderful learning experience for my, for me, and I also earned 12 hours of continuing education credits and got caught up on breaking educational news and hot topics that are going on in the educational world. One of the things that, that conference, our sessions that I attended was getting ready for the Common Core State Standards, which we all are hearing about right now. Do you know, over 40 states have agreed to adopt or assess the Common Core Standards, and students in many states will begin to be tested in 2013 and 14. We looked at how different the CCSS was from the current practices at, at this time, and also what is needed to make sure our students are ready. Sessions provided us up-to-date data in assessment, alignment, and curriculum, and professional development. I did attend many sessions on this topic. I asked the same question, will this replace No Child Left Behind?, which has not been re-certified as of this time, and it's five years behind. Everybody kind of scratched their heads because they were thinking the same thing I, I was thinking. You know, we're still testing for this, and now we're going to start testing on this other, and it's duplication and it's costing us money. And I think everybody's thinking the same thing. Hopefully, when we get this in place, that we will see this take, take its place, and that's what I'm hoping, because it is costing us extra dollars. I attended many other sessions, and one of them was getting along with difficult people. Now, we know we don't deal with those type people, but it was a very interesting session also. Besides getting to talk with many other board members from a lot of different states, even as far away as Hawaii, it was Hawaii, Alaska, you know, California, and you know I like to talk. And I asked them about many different problems they were having and how they work with them. Transportation been one thing that I was very interested in, and how they addressed that, and I think it was very interesting things we had talked about. Putting advertising on buses. Also, another thing that they had talked about, which I thought was very interesting, another thing we had talked about, how in Hawaii that they charge for transporting on yellow buses. Also, they use public transportation as, as coordinating with that, but this is something that they do, and I know that our transportation dollars are being lost right now. So, I think when you're able to talk to people one-on-one and how the other states do it, it is very important. Do you know, most people talk about, when, and I talked to them, when we were talking, that most of the, the other states talked about the loss of money, changes in schools, changes in the way parents and communities feel about schools, and how to make sure students come to school and make sure they are safe, and learn what they need to meet the outside world. The same things we're talking about. Some of our schools have not changed, though. In five years, I mean, they haven't changed, because some of our schools have not changed. Five years ago, there were still 1,276 operational one-room schoolhouses. I don't know if y'all realize that. And do you know that we still, in the U.S., have at least 650 one-room schoolhouses in America today? On the other hand, we have school systems that give each student a laptop to take home, like the Morrisville School System, and that was things that we talked about at the conference. Speakers. We had many, but three that were really outstanding. We had Mr. Khan of Khan, the founder of Khan Academy, providing software and 3,000-plus videos in math and science and other subjects, and most were taught by Mr. Khan himself, who, who, who had the idea in an effort to tutor his cousins remotely. Formerly, he was a hedge fund manager and had three degrees from MIT and a MBA from Harvard. Cabarrus County currently uses some of the materials from Khan University. November 2011, Khan Academy had 3.7 million visitors and 4.2 million pages viewed. Bill Gates used Khan, Khan's videos to help his three children with their schoolwork. We also had Sol O'Dad McBrien. She is the anchor for C.N. Morning Show, Starting Point. She is a journalist, and this lady gave us much insight. She has seen war. She is just an outstanding individual, and I know most of you know her and her start in women's issues. She was just outstanding, and tell us how she had started out, and she was just an outstanding individual. The next gentleman was Greg Canid, Can, I always pronounce his name Canada. And he, Mr. Canada, had been the president and chief executive officer for Harlem Children's Zone, which the New York Times called "one of the most ambitious social experiences of our time." Then, in 1997, the agency lost, launched the Harlem Children's Zone Project, which targets a special geographical area in central Harlem. The Zone Project today covers over 100 blocks and aimed to serve over 10,000 children by 2011. The New York Magazine said the project combines education, social, and medicine services. It starts at birth and follows children to college. The work of Mr. Canada and H.C.Z. has become a national model and has been the subject of many profiles in the media. Their work has been featured in 60 Minutes, The Oprah Winfrey Show, The Day Show, and Good Morning America, Nightline, CBS This Morning, The Charles Rose Show, National Public Radio, On Point, The New York Times, The New York Daily News, USA Today, and Newsday. It could go on and on, and this man just brought us all to our feet. Last, but not least, and then also I gave y'all the National Education Spotlight Legislative Update. Last, but not least, and I'm, I'm almost finished, and I didn't take two hours. Last, but not least, something that is, has been near and dear to most of our hearts that I did stop by, and this is on uniforms. And I stopped by not one, but at least four different booths on uniforms. I did give you some information, and I do have a brochure I was going to pass by, but I did want to just pick up a few of the key points on uniforms. 125 active members of the National School Board Association filled out a survey on school, school uniforms and standard dress codes. What a student wears to school affects the educational experience. Seventy-eight percent of the responses agreed that what a student wears to school affects their educational experience. Most high schools and middle school students are wearing uniforms. They are more and more uniform and standardized dress code programs in the secondary and high schools than ever before. Years ago, districts were starting their programs on the elementary level, but now responses are providing data for secondary and high schools, so you're seeing it more and more, and statistics prove it. School uniforms are still more cost-effective than general apparel. Fifty-nine percent of responses felt that parents find uniforms are more cost-effective, where another 31% were not sure. And this is due to the fact, again, checking, they are now sold more in all retails, where they were once the high-end retail. You're seeing them in your Walmarts, in your K-Marts, in all, in all the retail chains now. Seventy-eight percent of the responders agreed that what a student wears to school affects their educational experience. Seventy-eight percent of the responses agreed that what a student wears to school affects their educational experience. Most high schools and middle school students are wearing uniforms. They are more and more uniform and standardized dress code programs in the secondary and high schools than ever before. Years ago, districts were starting their programs on the elementary level, but now responses are providing data for secondary and high schools, so you're seeing it more and more, and the statistics prove it. School uniforms are still more cost-effective than general apparel. Fifty-nine percent of responses felt that parents find uniforms are more cost-effective, where another 31% were not sure. And this is due to the fact, again, checking, they are now sold more in all retails, where they were once the high-end retail. You're seeing them in your Walmarts, in your K-Marts, in all, in all the retail chains now. Seventy-eight percent of the responders agreed that what a student wears to school affects their educational experience. Fourteen percent were neutral on the topic, and seven percent neither agreed or strongly disagreed with that statement. When asked responders with school uniform dress code programs, they held, held the following opinion. When asked what the goals their school district considered most important when researching a, a school uniform standard dress code, 90% fits, felt programs reduce peer pressure, as opposed 80, 86% in the 2010 survey, 86 wanted to, per, wanted to explore, excuse me. It said that 86 in 2010 survey, 86% wanted to provoke or look into a clothing war to school. Seventy-six felt it reduced discipline issues compared to 74% in 2010. Also, let's see, what was my other? I had one more marked, and then I'm through Mr., uh, let's see, I think there was one more. The other issue I wanted to make, perfect example, this past year, I have a grandson that is going to school. My son, unfortunately, he spent just for t-shirts and, you know, apparel. Well, I have to admit, well, over 100 and something dollars just for that type thing. And it was well in the cost of things. They said it was a lot less expensive, because he was worried, what my son was worried about was him possibly being bullied. And this is one thing that was mentioned in the findings which y'all have. Bullying is becoming a very, very serious issue, and this, in the data that I gave to you, bullying is mentioned, and this is becoming a very strong issue. And at all the booths I went to, bullying is being balled up. So hopefully, I know we've talked about this, and hopefully with the data that is in this information, this board may consider looking at this again, and maybe looking at some of our schools where discipline is maybe at, at, at our highest point, and maybe possibly looking at doing, starting in our schools where discipline, or maybe some of our schools with the lower population. Hopefully, this is something that we can look at and maybe consider, because again, I think the data shows, shows what needs to be done. And again, I want to thank y'all for allowing me to have this opportunity to talk with other people from other states, and I think that it was very well worth the trip. And if you need additional information on some of the classes, you can go to the National School Board Association, and they, they do have some of the classes and things that are sessions that were there, and you can get the information. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. That was an excellent report, and you could tell just from listening to her that that was a very time-consuming report as well. And so, once again, Carolyn, thank you for going and representing our, this school district and our school board. Okay, board members, we'll move over to five point two, which is the board chair comments section, and I don't have a lot to say this evening, but it's been a short summer, and we've got just a couple more weeks. Matter of fact, two weeks from today, most of our children will be back in school, and we hope that they all had a safe summer, and everyone that left us in the spring, or in the early summer, will be joining us on the 27th. Okay, with that being said, Dr. Shepherd, it's your turn for your superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few announcements I'd like to make. As you just said, in two weeks, our students will be back, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff for working so hard throughout the summer to prepare things for the students to return and to welcome back our colleagues. I'd also like to encourage our parents who are viewing this to refer to our Back to the School website for information about the upcoming school year. The site's an excellent resource for everything, for information about everything, from student enrollment to school opening. Just select the parent tab on our website and on the homepage, and locate the Back to School link, and you'll find what you need there. Also, we're looking forward to the start of another year, and we're looking forward to making this one the best one yet. And to do that, I'd like to welcome back our teachers and staff members who were with us last year, and also commend our HR department for their good work in holding our teacher orientation meetings today and our new administrator orientation meetings last week. So, a great start for the, for the new school year. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction released last week its ABCs of Public Education data, and last week, during the work session, we reviewed a few of the results with you, and I'm just be pleased to share a few more with you. We've learned that 96.4% of all of our schools have met their annual measurable objectives. AMOs are performance targets that states, school districts, and specific subgroups within the schools achieve each year to show that they've met the requirements for No Child Left Behind. Also, 27 of our schools achieved either expected growth or high growth for the 11, 12 school year, and five of our schools were designated Honor Schools of Excellence. Nine were designated Schools of Distinction, and 12 received Honor of Schools of Progress. I'd like to also congratulate once more our high schools for their tremendous efforts in all of our schools, as they contribute to the reduction of our dropout rate and the increase of our graduation rate, which this year is 86.3. We're very pleased with that, but we also are committed to finding a way to reach the 13.7% of our students who are not graduating. Would like to say congratulations to Carl A. Fur Elementary School. They recently were named a winner in the Big Lots, Lots to Give Video Contest, and the school won $2,000. It's a great way to start the school year off. And lastly, I want to thank you for your participation in the community summit on August the first, and thank all of our community members who came out to be very supportive of that effort. And if you would like to join us in the conversation that we talked about on that day, I want to invite you to go to our website, and there's an icon in, near the bottom of the page, it's a leaf, and if you would click on that leaf, it would ask you for some information, and we're gathering those that want to join this effort in promoting public education and the success of our school system. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for the time to make the report.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Also, okay, board members, we're moving to six point O, guest speakers, and we do have one guest speaker that has signed up. The following guest speakers have requested to address the Board of Education tonight. Mr. Liam Shannon, he's director of Soccer Development for F.C. Carolina Alliance. He will speak to us this evening regarding communication with parents in the Cabarrus County Middle School Soccer League. If Mr. Shannon would come to the podium at this time, and, and he's going to give us this, his, whatever he has to say to us, and I wanted to remind you, Mr. Shannon, you, you know, as a speaker, you have three minutes, and whenever you start, that's when the clock starts, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Okay, thank you very much to yourself and all of the board members for listening to me this evening. F.C. Carolina Alliance is a youth soccer club based here in Cabarrus County. We have been serving Cabarrus County schools for over seven years as the league administrator for middle school soccer. In addition, for the past nine months, FCCA have been conducting free after-school clinics in elementary schools during the Kids Plus programs. It is our request that a link be placed on the county homepage in order to give parents greater access to information regarding middle school soccer and Kids Plus soccer. Without question, the biggest issue we have with regards to both middle school soccer and Kids Plus programs is disseminating information. People rarely know what is happening, why it is happening, or when it is happening. We have information readily available on our website, however, communication with parents is still extremely difficult. One might not think it could, it would be, or it should be, but we still find that it is. The easier we can get information directly into the hands of the parents, the smoother all programs will run, and therefore, the happier people will be. Placing a small link to the FCCA website onto the county homepage, right next to where you have your Facebook and Twitter links, would greatly assist in communication with the parents. I would like to make a note that FCCA run the middle school soccer program and the Kids Plus programs at no cost to the county or the individual schools. We would like a small icon providing a direct link to our homepage at the bottom of the website, and I would just thank you very much for your consideration in this. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shannon, you did good. You had a minute left over.
Perfect.
Thank you so much, and we'll take your comments and advisement.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks again. Okay, board members, we move on to seven point one, which is the approval of the consent agenda, and these are the items that we discussed on our work session here last Monday, and all of these items had the nod that they would be okay. So now, I need a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is presented.
Second.
Have motion, have second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Consent agenda's been approved. I know, Sue, you're glad of that. You can send your resolution, do whatever you need to now. You're ready to go. Okay, board members, we're going to move on now to the action agenda. We only have one item tonight, that's eight point one. Mr. Lynn Wickie's going to talk to us about the transfer of the mobile units to Rowan Cabarrus Community College. Mr. Wickie?
Thank you, Mr. Durman and, and board. You looked at this last week, and in the interim between meetings, I had the opportunity to speak with the folks from Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And basically, there is a lot of redlining, a lot of that is grammatical changes and structure, if you will, changes, structural changes to, to reflect a consistency throughout the document. The two major changes, and they, they weren't major, but the only two of, of, let's say, substance, were that Rowan Community College asked for, were specifically, one, which I will just point out to right here, which is actually having a place identified from which the mobiles will be coming and from where, to where they will be going back. It will help them budget for, for that occurrence in the future, and so we determined they would be, of course, coming from Carly Fur Elementary School, and we've decided that we would put in the information here that that's to where they should be returned, just so they can accommodate a, a figure in their budgeting purposes, in their budget for the future, rather. The other issue was further down, and I'll see if I can get to that quickly, had to do with a repair. Let me just get on the right page for you. It's item six point L. I think I just passed it up. Under this item, six L, at one time, the, the language spoke more in general terms about costs that would be identified upon a final inspection. And at that time, in reading the original document, it was felt by RCC that, that it was too broad, and so we agreed that the language, as suggested here, that repairs, that the costs that they would pay would be repairs of damage and resulting from wear and tear by RCC's use of the units. We felt that was fair and justifiable, and so we agreed that, to put it in for your review and approval. So with that, and, and as I say, the more general consistency issues of, of the grammatical changes, we do recommend this MOU to the board for approval so that we can allow the two mobile units to be used by Rowan Community College.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie. Board members, this has been your opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll be voting on this, as this is an action item. So we'll start on Mr. Fur's side. Tim, you have any comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Furtinbaum?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment, Lynn, on the item about the, and back to the elementary school. Do we want to have it, I guess, more open-ended if, or, or to add a sentence that says, if CCBOE decides to change the receiving location, we will pay the extra? So I imagine the transportation of those units is by the mile?
It is.
Or something of that nature? So it costs X amount per mile, and we want to move those units to something that's three miles different? Then we would accept the responsibility? Because I'm just wondering, in, in a year, we could have a complete change in what we think the population is. We may want them somewhere else, that they're needed more. the population is, and we may want them somewhere else, that they're needed more urgently. So, I just didn't want us to get bound by this and have to transport them a second time, because that's wear and tear on the units as well. So.
I think that's a very good question, Ms. Furtinball and Mr. Wickie. Can we address that issue?
Yes, certainly, we can.
Is that going to be anything that's going to prevent us from voting on this this evening?
No, I'm sure RCC would have no problem with that language change.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's really a good catch. Thank you, Ms. Furtinball. Ms. Blackwater, do you have any comment?
I just have one question, and this may be a, for you, Sarah. Seven says, and shall be binding upon, and is that next word a word? I want to make sure that's not misspelled, or is that a legal?
Where are we?
Seven under miscellaneous, and it says, and shall be binding, that last sentence in the paragraph, and?
Binding upon and an urge to the benefit of, it's legal mumbo jumbo.
Okay, so that, I thought, I want to make sure it's accurate if we're, so it's correct. Thank you, that's it.
Or you'll only see in legal documents.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blackwater. Mr. Cogger, do you have a question, comment?
One is.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter?
Mine was, and, I mean, you're saying, and it may be somewhere, you're saying, wear and tear result from RCC use of the unit, but what, do we have somewhere else recovered? Wear and tear is fine and dandy, but what about if by some chance there is vandalism on it?
That's covered by insurance.
So we're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as we're covered with that, then?
We do have coverage, both for general liability as where as the unit itself.
Okay, as long as you're covered.
I think we're good to go, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Minot, you have any questions, comment? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Furtinball.
Sorry, we have two attachments on our agenda. Why do we have a second one?
The other attachment, I believe, is the unredlined, in other words, the final form of that without the redlining.
Okay, because I didn't think they were identical, but, okay.
It's the same document without the redlining?
That is correct.
Okay, it just looked like there was some things that read a little bit different, but it could be just the confusion of the redline. Okay.
Okay, Board members, we need to move on this. Do I have a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Rowan Community College as presented with the change, Ms. Furtinball may? Yes, Mr. Wickie?
One point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. There are no dates listed because we're not exactly sure, so with the attorney's agreement, we indicated that we would, once Rowan County dispenses, decides what dates specifically they will start this program on, we would then add the dates.
Those would be the effective dates.
Yes, sir.
We can approve it tonight, but it won't be effective until you get all that legal stuff taken care of.
That's correct.
Okay, let's call for the motion. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, let me get back to where we were. I think that's all we've got tonight.
Thank you very much.
Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to convene in closed session. It was a very short meeting. This will probably be the shortest meeting we'll have for a while, so we didn't have to keep you tied up too long, but we do thank you for being here, and so, let me read my legal thing here to you. So we need to go into closed session, pursue it to General Statute 143.318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143.318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. Do I have a motion that we go into closed session?
So moved.
On motion second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask, since we moved the one item to closed session, that you also add a reference to A2 to prevent the premature disclosure of an honorary degree, scholarship, prize, or similar award?
Okay, so that, that will be pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A3 and 2. Okay, now I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business meeting for August the 13th. We'll see you back same place on September, sometime about the 1st of September, and I hope you all get started real good with your school on the 27th. All right, good night.
Robert, do you want to keep this statement?